First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise. Thank you. Next up is the Approval of Minutes from the Regular Meeting 10/26/2017. Next up is the Student Government Report, Student Activities. Thank you. I have one question. When is the deadline for donating to the Turkey Basket Program? Do you have it? Number seventeen. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Next up is the Consent Agenda. We have Approval of Minutes from the Regular Meeting 10/26/2017. Approval of Minutes from Executive Session 10/26/2017. The Enrollment Report from 11/1/2017. The School Police Report from 10/1/2017. And finally, the Residency True-And-C Report from 11/1/2017. Pledge of the Committee. Motion to approve by Mrs. Goggan. Second by Mr. Fiorello. All those in favor? Aye. That passes four-nothing. Thank you. Next up is the Report out of Executive Session Meeting. We met this evening. There were no votes taken. And I need a vote to seal the minutes of Executive Session. Mr. Hess makes a motion to seal. Mrs. Goggan seconds. All those in favor? That passes four-nothing. Next up, I want to skip over because I don't want Mr. Kenwood to retire. So, next up is the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could, if you could join me down on the floor as we normally do, under these circumstances, I'd appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. As you all know, Tom Kenwood has decided, after many, many, many years of coaching and before that teaching, he's retired from teaching, and has decided that it's time to hang up the running shoes. And so he will be retiring at the end of the season. Is the season over? Just finished. And if I could just give you my perspective on what I've learned about Tom in the, this is my sixth year in Cumberland. And, you know, it's interesting. When you meet people, you know, you get this, you get this feeling about them. And, you know, like, there are people who we know, for whatever reason, and I don't want this to be negative, but when you meet them, you know, they, they, there's something negative about them. And I don't know that they're necessarily held in high regard. And then there are those folks that, whenever you mention their name, whenever their name comes up, there is this, this positive, optimistic feeling that happens whenever a person's name is mentioned. And the reason I say that is because, in the six years that I've been here, every single time Tom Kenwood's name has been mentioned, it has been mentioned with admiration and respect. And I mean that sincerely. So, as I've said before, we had an opportunity to recognize Tom. The mayor was there at the last home meet of his coaching career. And the most important thing, it seems to me, as an educator, is knowing, when you make the decision to retire, is knowing that you have had an impact on the lives of the students and the athletes that you've worked with. And there's no question that Tom Kenwood has had a profound and positive impact on his students and his student athletes. An impact that they will take with them forever, and they shared that with everyone who attended that ceremony on that beautiful day. So, we have two things that we would like to share. One is from the governor, a citation from the governor. And one is a little something that we would like to share on behalf of the school district. This is a citation from Governor Raimondo, and I would like to read it to you. It says, "Certificate of Special Recognition. Be it known that I, Gina M. Raimondo, Governor of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations, extend my congratulations to Thomas Kenwood on the occasion of your retirement, after over forty years of dedicated service as a coach at Cumberland High School. Your work and accolades in Cumberland are remarkable and merit recognition. In honor of your retirement, I am pleased to issue this certificate of special recognition. You have my best wishes for a healthy and happy retirement, given under my hand and the great seal of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations. This was dated October, the third day of October 2017." Congratulations for that, Tom. And we decided that we needed to recognize Tom with a handsome plaque. And here is what the, and there's, it's really nice. It has on the plaque an insignia that says Coach. And it says, Cumberland, the Cumberland School Department, an appreciation of Thomas Kenwood, head coach of boys' track and field, and recognition of more than forty years of dedication and commitment to the students and athletes of Cumberland High School. Congratulations on your retirement. Congratulations, Tom.
I've known Mr. Kenwood, I don't even know how many years. Forty, maybe, something like that. Mr. Kenwood was my elementary school gym teacher, if I think back to community school. And I don't know how many years you were, but I remember doing gymnastics, and I remember doing square dancing. So, so all these years, I've wanted to think, it was traumatic, you know. I, you know, and then when I went to high school, I ran indoor track and outdoor track with you as my coach. And I have to, and in thinking about this, I think that of all the years I was in school, you're probably the teacher or coach that I spent the most time with. And you've had a really big impact on my life. So, Mr. Mitchell said that you've had an impact, you really have. You were, you are a great coach, and I'm sad that my son won't have you as a coach. He is going to be a freshman in the fall. And I know you probably hear that a lot. But I, I, so, and then I have to say, as an adult, I worked with you on things with the road race for the, I don't know if it was July Fourth Road Race. And your dedication to everything is just unsurpassed. And the amount of time that you invested in, in my teens when I was in high school, as an adult, I began to appreciate how much time you spent with us. Just all the time with your family. Like, now I really get it. You sacrificed a lot for us. I think your kids were very little at that time. This was in the late eighties, so I don't know when they were born. But I just want to say that I appreciate it, and congratulations on your retirement. I know you're not going away, and I know that you'll cheer on the Cumberland teams from the sidelines. So, I look forward to seeing you around. Thank you. Still on the Superintendent's Report, so please continue, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. And a couple of other things that I wanted to share with all of you. As you all know, we've discussed at a few of our recent school committee meetings that Community Elementary School is a Blue Ribbon School. The celebration is tomorrow at 9:30 at Community School. Certainly, the school committee has been invited. Unfortunately, we were hoping that we would be able to conduct the ceremony outside and have everyone attend, but unfortunately, it's going to be in the thirties. So, we have decided through much planning that, you know, we need to do it inside. We've made some plans to do some streaming so that anyone who wants to watch the event will have an opportunity to do that. So, that is tomorrow at 9:30. There is also a townwide flu clinic at McCourt Middle School on November 30th. That's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We hope that folks will take advantage of the flu shot. So, hopefully, it will help prevent any illness during these winter months when we know that the flu is in full force. We also have Freight Farm VIP Ceremony, which is scheduled for December 4th at 3:00. And coupled with that, on December 5th, which is the high school open house, we're working on plans that will provide an opportunity for parents to get a glimpse of the Freight Farm and the plants that are growing in there. And we had a meeting this week. We've been meeting regularly to talk about a number of items, including getting teachers trained and how we can involve students in this process. And 1,000 plants were put in the vertical columns in the Freight Farm this week. And it really is quite a sight to see, and it's an amazing process. So, we want to provide an opportunity for not only the VIPs on December 4th, but also to parents on December 5th during the open house. So, we are planning that. If I could, could I add one more thing that's not on the agenda, Mr. Chairman? That is, I think, really important for folks to hear. And, and, and that is that, I should have mentioned this, and I apologize for not sharing this at our last meeting. But the Commissioner came to Cumberland last Thursday and visited Garvin Elementary School. He spent two hours there, and we had a chance to talk about some really important issues like curriculum. And, and we talked about our math curriculum. We talked about our ELA curriculum. We talked about how our park scores have improved significantly as a district. He was interested in learning more about why we were seeing the results that we were seeing regarding the academic growth of our students. And Garvin is a great example. And one of the things I think that was really nice is we had a chance to actually get into classrooms. So, we spent a lot of time visiting a number, in fact, I think, I think we hit just about every classroom in the, in the elementary school. So, it was just a really, just a really nice visit. He had an opportunity to talk to a number of teachers. He had a chance to see SRSD and Thinking Maps in action. So, it was, it was a good day. He also had the Deputy Commissioner with him, Marion Snyder, who happens to be from Cumberland, by the way. And she was, sent me a nice email after their, their, after their visit. And she had a lot, a lot of nice things to say about what both she and the Commissioner saw. So, the Commissioner is scheduled to be at the Blue Ribbon Ceremony tomorrow. So, we look forward to seeing Commissioner Wagner, and I'm sure some of his team will be there as well. So, it was, it was a good day for Garvin and a good day for Cumberland. We had a really nice, nice visit on that day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Mr. Mitchell? Next up is the Chairperson's Report, the FY 2018 Budget Update. There's no update tonight, so we can skip over that. Next up is Reports of Standing Committees, Payment of Bills. Who's taking that? Mr. Hess is taking that.
Okay, I'll stand in for Mr. DeMonica. Payment of Bills, we had invoices in the amount of $2,021,943.92. That passed on a vote of three to zero in the Finance Committee. So, I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Hess makes a motion to approve Payment of Bills in the amount of $2,021,943.92. Second by Mr. Fiorello. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. That passes four-nothing. Thank you. Next up is Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. It's probably you again, Mr. Hess.
So, it is. So, we had discussions surrounding the budget at this point in time. Things looked pretty good. Our healthcare expenses are on, on budget and on track, unlike they were last year. So, we're doing good in that sense. We also voted on SCR 2017-10, which is a resolution for compensation for the fiscal year 2017, 2018. That also passed on a three-to-zero vote. And that will come up later in the agenda.
Mr. Hess, anything else for Fiscal Management? All right. Next up is Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorello.
Policy and Procedures did meet this evening. We discussed several items, which are actually on the agenda for later on. But two of them, I-6, school-sponsored overnight field trips, and I-10, extracurricular, school-sponsored overnight field trips. There was a question regarding the zone, if you will, that students can eat in without a chaperone being literally next to them. That answer, that question had been answered. No action was taken on those. So, there will be no public hearing or vote on those two items later on. And we will be meeting again not until December.
Next up is Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. That's my subcommittee. We did not meet this week. We had to postpone our meeting due to illness. The plan, I think, is to meet next week. But we'll be sending on an agenda tomorrow if that's, if that's the case. Next up, comments from the public. Any comments from the public? Hearing none. We're going to move on to Public Hearing, Reading of Amended Policies. I think what I heard Mr. Fiorello say is that we're not tackling these, but I'll let you take it away, Mr. Fiorello.
Yes. I-6 and I-10 do not need to be read, although, and also, I'm sorry, I was negligent. D-10, School Committee Approval for Contracts, and G-18, Personnel Record Retention are, were tabled. So, those do not need a public hearing at this time either.
Okay. So, next up is Public Comment. I don't know if anyone wants to talk about policies that we're not considering tonight, but if anyone has anything they want to say, I'll give them time to do it. Okay. Old Business. Update with Durham School Services on Bus Routes and Schedules. Mr. Mitchell.
We have our friends, representatives from Durham here this evening, to answer any questions that you may have. And I think the most important thing that we need to do is to approve the bus routes that, you know, have, I think, been revised so that they are accurate at this point. But they are here to answer any questions that you may have. And it might not be a bad idea, just to give an update. We did meet and have a conversation about the, is it Where's My Bus? Is that it? Where's My Bus? The bus tracking? The bus track? Oh, it is. Oh, okay. All right. All right. Good. So, I don't know if anyone has questions for Paul or Ann, but we do need to approve the revised bus routes.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything about the changes that we talked about last time or anything? Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
Are all the buses actually running on time? Are they getting to schools on time? And are they running so close to the first bell that, or even to the second bell, that as soon as there's a little bit of weather going on, they're going to start being late? I know that there's some buses are still late once or twice a week at Ashton. I know it was the old Bus 19. I'm not sure if that bus is still 19 or if that's actually changed. I believe that there is also a bus, I forget the other school, and I don't have my notes, unfortunately, but, or, how are the buses? What are their times like right now?
With the revisions that we've, we've made, and there's still revisions coming every day because there are new students coming in every day to our system. And depending on where the system, where the students are, depends what the buses are doing. But with the revisions that we've made, even with the weather coming, we feel that the buses will be on time. We have two buses that have been difficult, two newer buses that have been difficult for us and that we've made adjustments to. Once again, taking students off of a minibus, moving them onto another minibus to get the minibuses in there on time, as close as we can. Bus 19 at Ashton is actually Bus 300 at Ashton now. That is, that's been a tremendous thing. That bus is getting in there. I believe it's averaging off about 8:47, 8:48 instead of 9:02, 9:03. So, that move made a major change. Those are the only buses that I, we feel that we're having problems with it this time. It's a, it's a moving, it's a moving thing. Yep.
I always think I have a loud voice. The kids tell me I'm loud. Bus 40 recently added another student. Now, Bus 40 is a special ed bus, minibus. And the child that was added is not a special ed student, but because he's out of district, that bus, and this happened maybe about three and a half weeks ago, three, three and a half weeks ago, was added. And so, it caused that bus to get to the school around 8:58, 9:00. So, we're making, we've made, we made that, we made a change with that. It just, it just didn't work, and that's what happens a lot of times when we put students that are not special ed on these buses because probably, you know, the fact that they're out of the district or maybe going to another school for a program makes them special ed now because we couldn't put the regular bus there because it's out of the school district. So, it's out of the school residence. So, but we've corrected that on that bus. Those are onesie-twosies that happen all the time. We're always adding new kids, moving kids, special needs kids or, or shelter children. Those are the things that we constantly shuffle that initially may cause something to be late that ordinarily maybe wouldn't be. And we kind of let it play out, and if it doesn't get better, then we try another alternative. Sometimes we just don't know that. It looks like it might work, and it doesn't. So...
I'm just curious. How many regular ed kids are on actual special ed buses? Not minibuses, but special ed buses? And is that allowed?
Well, if they're out of, if, if they're going to, it may not be special ed, but if they're going to another school and they're out of the school residence, then the bus that's within that district, within that school residence area, the full-size bus, it would take too long for that bus to pick up all those children and to leave. We put them on the special ed buses, and we've always done this because those special ed buses do cover pretty much the whole town to each school. So, it happens a lot. A lot of the buses have kids that are not special ed, but they're in programs that bring them to another school.
Dr. Santa, do you have any opinion on this? Do you want to weigh in on this at all?
That is problematic in that when we're providing a special ed bus, it's actually a special ed service that is indicated on IEP through their Individual Education Program document, stating that they require that service due to the level of disability. So, students are placed on special ed service buses in order, sometimes it's for access due to needing a wheelchair access or something along those lines. Sometimes it's behavioral. We have quite, quite a few kids that are on the special ed bus because their behavioral needs. Some of our students, it's because the level of noise is too, too loud on a typical bus. So, it's a little bit problematic to put, to mix kids on that special service bus, in my opinion. I think some of it may be the reason why they're on the bus might be, we could look at. But just to put them on because they happen to not live within the district of school, to me, it's very comparable to, I assign a classroom over here, and I say, well, it's a special ed classroom, but I dump whatever kids in there that I want, special ed regular. It doesn't necessarily make it special ed because we're calling it a special ed bus. It's the service that we're providing to the students. So, I did ask you about this a little while ago, because I'd heard, and I didn't realize that was happening. And I know that there were some issues with, regarding some of our behavioral students on the buses, where there were little kindergartners, also typical kindergartners on the special ed bus with some kids with pretty significant behavior. And I think, I think it's problematic. I, I do think from a fiscal point of view, I understand why you would do it. You want to try to pick them up easier. The big buses going through every single neighborhood in the whole district would be very hard. So, I completely understand why it happened, but I'm a little bit concerned about who we're mixing with whom and for what reason.
Is that, can we, can we review?
Keep turning that off. I'm sorry. I don't know what keeps going on. That's my 13-year-old.
Can we review which typical kids are on special ed buses? And what kids are, what kids with IEPs are on those buses so we can kind of get to the bottom?
Where I wouldn't think it's problematic, if we're using a, let's say, we had a student in a wheelchair on a bus, and we need a specialized bus because of the wheelchair access. That's a little bit different than a behavioral kid with... Than a behavioral student. So, that, that's where I get a little bit concerned. I'm not concerned about the kids that need it for an access issue. That's not that big of a deal. But I wasn't even aware this was going on until just recently, so I haven't, I haven't looked at that information.
All right. So, can we, can we look at that and make sure that changes don't need to be made or they are?
And I know there were some changes that were made. I do know that. I don't know exactly all of them, but I know some changes are made with the BF Norton bus. So, yeah, I keep turning it off. She's turning it off too, and it just keeps going on.
Yeah. So, I have two things related to that. Unless I'm mistaken, and it's happened once or twice before. My son is on one of those buses, and it's not because he's out of district. It's because of the road that we live on is not conducive to having a bus stop on the opposite side of the road. So, it, that's not the only situation where it's out of district or it's going to a special program. So it, that's not the only situation where it's out of district or it's going to a special program. You have instances, and I think this bus does this for a few different children, where you have at least one special needs person on the bus and then you have other non-special needs people that are being picked up because you can't get a bus there easily. Correct. So I just wanted to point that out. The other thing I would say, just, just for clarification and confirmation, at this point, it is Durham's contention that we do not have any buses that are running chronically late throughout the district, correct? And it's also your opinion that when it comes to this winter and we're faced with weather, that we do not anticipate buses running late because of weather unless it's in extreme circumstances. So the fact that it is winter and the fact that there's some snow on the ground, you do not anticipate that becoming a problem that would make a large number or even a number of buses chronically late. Right. But to Mr. Fiorello's point, is it the point where we are so close on our times that, you know, an inch of snow and slight delay that approaches inclement weather is going to make a large number of buses chronically late? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify too, that a small bus doesn't have to be, it's the students that are accessing. A small bus can be a typical bus. It doesn't have to be a special ed bus. It's really the nature of the students and the service they need. So some of our kids just need door-to-door for lots of reasons. So it's not the size, it's, it's why we're providing the service to that particular student.
Right. If you have regular education students on a, on one of these buses that's deemed, you know, is... What's the problem? The problem, you know, the specialized students can still get the services they need. Can they get the services?
It depends on why they're, why we put that into their IEP. So we don't do that for every student. So again, if it's like a student needing access because they need a wheelchair ramp or anything like that, to me, if that's the reason why, that's not a big deal. But if they're on there because of the level of noise or because of the level of their behavior... So a lot of our students with behavior, we'll put them on a smaller bus so we can separate them out slightly different. But then now, but now you put more kids on the bus that are regular ed. We're exposing, I think there's an exposure issue regarding what those kids are might be seeing, especially if they're little kids, little kindergartners. But there's also, you don't have the same ability to separate the kids and provide more intervention. And sometimes we're putting on because they need to be monitored a little bit closer. So you, you know, you have a bus monitor or bus aide, sorry, with, with less students. So it's really, to me, it's a service that we're providing. It's an expensive service that we provide, that we think very carefully about before we put kids on, on that special ed service. And you can use a big bus to provide a special ed service too. It's not, it's not the size necessarily. So it's really looking at why, why they're on there. My biggest concern were the BF Norton, the success classroom with the behavioral issues when I found out that there were typical like three or four kindergartners also placed on that bus that then were exposed to some, you know, inappropriate behavior and hard to separate kids out when there was more kids on the bus than what was expected. So I can look at that and find out. So I think it depends on why, whether it's an issue or not.
Bus 26 for community school. How, what are their times running at this point? That one thing? Right. And, yeah, and that's... Right. And I think that's the one bus that I'm mostly concerned about as soon as there's any snow on the ground, knowing those back roads and the length of that run. That as soon as there's any snow on the ground, that those, that bus is going to start being late all the time. Is there, has there been any more looking at taking like those last couple stops that are over by, on Diamond Hill? By like Thomas Lighton Boulevard or whatever street it actually stops at. It goes down in there. But there's got to be more kids going to community school in that neighborhood. So I'm just curious why that bus has to pick up literally one or two kids still at the end of that run? Okay. So wait, so is it, I don't understand the timing thing though, because then it's a capacity issue. When you say timing, what do you actually mean?
If you take children off Bus 26 and put it on another bus, you're going to create the same problem on that other bus because all of the bus routes, you have a transportation window. And so from the last school that they leave to the next school, you may have a half hour. So every single run is built to get to the next school within that half hour. Now, if I start adding more to the other, now you're going to throw the timing off on the other.
No, I understand that, but what I don't understand is there can't be only two kids in that entire plat that are going to community school? There's only two kids in that entire plat of five streets that are going to community school? That, that, I mean, it's possible. I mean, it just amazes me. That's all. Yeah, and I know that neighborhood actually, and there's, you know... No, no, I understand all that. Okay. Yeah, I do. I just...
If I could, if I could offer some more information regarding the non-special ed children on the special ed buses, I can provide you a list of all of the students on the special ed buses that are not special ed. And maybe we can revisit that and see, you know, what we can do to transport them in a different manner. I, I mean, putting them on the other buses will cause those other buses to be late. It, it may mean another bus or another bus at each of the schools if, if we pull them from every elementary school, we pull those special needs children off from all of the other schools. So it, and, and I'm not saying that's the case. I'm just saying, I, I certainly believe there's quite a few, you know, maybe 10. If I look at all eight special ed buses, maybe there's 10. Would you say that? Non-special ed children on those buses because there was nowhere else to put them. And it made sense for the routes.
Go back to Bus 26. Was the stop added when the routes were redone, the one at Georgiana? I don't remember that being on the original routes. And I just... Okay. I can, I don't have the, well, it's not online anymore, but I have it printed out, I think, at home. Okay.
Off of my head. I just...
Wondering, just because it's such a long route, why would? But, okay.
Not to ping pong and not to belabor the point, but to follow up on that, I, I think, well, it would be interesting to understand what students are on, what non-special ed students are on special ed buses. To Dr. Santa's point, I think that would also have to involve a conversation about, in her professional opinion, which buses have students that she would not want to have. So there may be several buses that have students that have access issues that she is perfectly fine with having non-special ed students on. But I think we would have to identify the buses that she would not want to see that interaction happen. And that's the conversation we would have to have. It's not that we don't want to mingle them. It's certain circumstances.
And honestly, it's something that we've done since we've, 2005. And, but it's not something that we just do here. It's, it's the way most transportation is done with all companies, with all schools. They always, every time there's an out-of-district child, those are the buses, the special ed, that go out of district. So they, they will put them on there if there's room. So we can change that. That was a one-day thing. That happened Wednesday, happened yesterday and is not going to be consistent. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I know we go, every year, the, the bus routes are changed all, you know, throughout the fall. And I don't know how long it usually goes. I guess my question about the next item on the agenda is, we're being asked to approve the bus routes. And the bus routes that we know about today, that we, that are published on the website, are they our best estimate for, for the way things are happening today? And with the knowledge that we may have to change things in the future? Yeah. I understand that, yeah. I think what, what, what the committee needs to do is approve bus routes. So that's on the agenda tonight. And I, I think just with the knowledge that things may have to change in the future. So next item up, I mean, actually, are there any more questions for Durham? Next item is discussion and a vote to approve 2017-18 school bus routes. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Fiorella makes a motion to approve. Second by Mrs. Goggan. Any discussion? All those in favor? That passes four-nothing. Thank you. Actually, you're, you're still on the agenda. You're next up too. Under new business, we have Durham School Services Bus Tracking App. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, I know that Durham has been having some in-house conversations and I believe they actually had a training, I think on Monday, regarding the bus tracking app. I also had a conversation with the, I don't know if he's a regional manager, Steve Smuck, about this. It really is, I think, an app that will be helpful to parents regarding where their child's bus is on the route. And they'll be informed of any delays and those kinds of things. So I know that the Durham staff here in Cumberland is in the process of learning how to use the app. And it's my understanding that this will be ready to be rolled out within the next two weeks, as I understand it, I think is what Steve said. Is that right, Ann?
I mean, there's some prep work. So I need to get together with your IT person and make sure that all of our student ID numbers match yours. And they should, because we do the uploads. So before we launch it, we'll do an upload because everything is based on that student's name and the ID number and it being correct so that the parent can track their child to the proper bus that they're on. And so we just want to make sure that's correct and that all of the buses are properly registered inside the app. And then that's probably two to three weeks, we'll present it to you. I'd like to, within the next few days, send you over some information for all of you to look at. I know there's some questions about security and other people being able to get this information. And it is pretty secure. It's an app that the parents will download onto their phone or their home computer. And they log in and they put their student's ID and it's only going to show them that bus and where it is in the route. I honestly need to learn a little bit more about it myself. I did get some training on Monday. And we're prepping for this to start in a few weeks. But I think it depends on, once we provide you the information, with the parents now registering and logging on to track the bus. And so I don't know how many parents will actually do that initially. So one of the other issues is unless you have a student's name, for example, unless one of you have students in the system, I can't even track. I track it with my own software, but no one else would ever be able to get into this and track this. And that was something we discussed today. So, but I do want to provide you with some information to, to review. And I'm sure it'll generate questions. And at that point, I'll be a little bit more savvy about it myself.
That sounds good. If you could send it to Mr. Mitchell's office?
I will, I will.
That would be good. We have another meeting this year on December 14th. So if you could target that date for coming back to talk about it. I understand sometimes we don't work out, but that would be the next one.
And don't hesitate. Shoot us an email if you have questions. I know, I know the police chief put a call in to us the other day. He was concerned. So we went over a few things with him, but I'd like to provide him some information too because he had some concerns.
How long has Durham been offering this?
It's been a pilot program for about a year and a half.
You know how many other districts across the country are using it?
Initially, it was used a lot and kind of faded off. Smithfield uses it. There's not a lot of activity on it. We just introduced it to our Newport location. And this will be the third location in Rhode Island. And there'll be a fourth one right after that with one of our charter schools.
And is Steve the district manager still?
Steve is the regional manager.
Okay. And, okay, because I saw he's also working the, the Smithfield office. Was he always doing that? I mean, we used to see him once in a while, but we...
Yeah, Steve, they changed his district. And now he's back covering, he wasn't covering Rhode Island at all for about a year. And so he is back and he covers all of Rhode Island, Massachusetts and New Hampshire. So you're seeing a lot more of him. And he apologized. He wanted to be at tonight's meeting, but he had other commitments.
Thank you. Next item is discussion and a vote to approve resolution SCR 2017-10 Employee Compensation 2017-18. Mr. Hess, I believe this was in your committee?
Yeah. So as I said, this passed in Finance, three to zero. This is updated employee compensation for this fiscal year. I would move passage.
Mr. Hess, passage of SCR 2017-10 Employee Compensation 2017-18. Second by Mr. Fiorello. Any discussion? All those in favor? That passes four-nothing. So this will be put on the web for anyone to see what the ranges are for, for, for payment. Next item is discussion and a vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2017-18 school year. Mr. Demana?
Chair, good evening. This evening, we do have three renewals that we are requesting approval for.
Demana had said there are three renewals and they're, they're in our shared drive. Pleasure of the committee. Motion to approve by Mr. Hess, second by Mrs. Goggan. All those in favor? That passes four-nothing. Thank you. Next is discussion and a vote to approve amended policies. Yes, so this, I'm just going to read it out. I-6, school-sponsored overnight field trips, and I-10, extracurricular, school-sponsored overnight field trips. As Mr. Fiorello said, there, there was no action taken, so they're not, there's no action for us to take tonight. And the same thing with the other two, which is discussion and a vote to approve first reading of policies. D-10, school committee approval of contracts, four contracts, excuse me. And G-18, personnel record retention. Again, there's no action tonight for us. Next up are personnel recommendations, and my understanding is there are none. Is that correct, Mr. Mitchell?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Couldn't find the button.
Next is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Anyone have anything? Mr. Hess?
Just real quickly, now that we're aware of your square dancing prowess, I'm hopeful that at some point we will get a chance to see that.
Yeah. There are some things you shouldn't admit in public, and that was one of them. Anything else?
Just to give you a little cover, I learned square dancing when I was in, when I was a kid also, it was just part of the.
Oh, it was the curriculum.
PE curriculum.
It was. Um I I do want to say that the, and I I'm going to, the budget commission, I I forget the the name of our commission, but then Mr. Hess and I are on. Um the town budget commission met last night, and we had a really good discussion. Um we, there was a presentation by Mr. Pignano about five-year projections for the school. There was a um a presentation by Mr. Parmally about five-year projections for the town. And then uh there was a a presentation from BVP about their five-year projections as well. Um for the schools, I I think everyone should know that um we're projecting deficits. I if you if you look um in the future, each year has a deficit, has a gap between what we expect for revenue and what we expect for expenditures. And one of the things that Chairman Mutter uh talked about last night was, this is a deficit without improving any services or adding anything. And we all know that we would love to um to improve like the experience for our our students. So um this is, this is the problem that the commission has informed to uh to deal with. Uh just looking at the numbers, um Mr. Hess, uh I I think the uh like two years out, we're at two point two million or two point three million, then four point five million, and then six point five million. Just to give you an idea of of the the um, and and that's like if no additional town money comes in. So we know that this is sort of the worst-case scenario, um but that's what we're looking at. And I think it's important, I mean, it seems really early to be talking about next year's budget, but um as Mr. Mitchell knows, pretty much budget season is year-round. So um we we'll come back with some more information from from this, these meetings, our our next meeting is at the end of the month. And they're open meetings, so anyone can come, so I invite members of the public and members of the school community to attend to. They're interesting, um I have to say, they're they're fruitful, they're they're uh, we've only had a couple, but they they've been good meetings. Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, do we have a executive session after this meeting?
No, we do not, Mr. Danny.
So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mr. Hess, all those in favor? That passes four nothing. So we adjourned at eight oh two, thank you, everyone.